Hello, good evening all. I hope I am audible and the presentation is visible. We will, one second, yeah. We will go ahead and today's session, we are going to be seeing two further case studies. Uh, so let's go into the first case study. Like usual, after the case study, there will be some questions. Then we will have a short break, we will take the second case study and then we will have some time for some free exchange of questions. So let's without much time being spent, go on to the case. The first case we are going to be talking about is a sugar company acquisition, right? Sugar is a longstanding industry, right? It's been there for long and it's one of the basic industries which is there. And this is a case where we are going to look at an acquisition by a sugar company of another sugar company. So what has happened is over the period, sugar industry has been critical and it has been a major contributor and of course nearly everything requires sugar. So it's something which is a staple product, right? And because of the boom which has been happening, there has been growth happening on sugar. With lot of changes in policies happening, government is also promoting ethanol blending. With that, there are multiple uses which are coming in, right? Which also we need to bear in mind in terms of what's happening. In a very competitive state, which is what sugar industries are under today, there is a lot of pressure, right? And that was the case when this deal was happening also. There is this company Greenfield Agro, which is a leading company and it was looking to acquire Sunrise Sugars. So that is the example on case study we are going to be looking at today. So if you look at Greenfield Agro, they had about 5,000 crores of annual revenues, so large company, right? It had a well-established presence. It had a good name in the market as a sugar industry and as a listed company, right? It had a debt equity ratio of point eight, very, very careful and cautious financial management position. This company had also invested heavily into distillery operations. The distillery operations enables them to align with the government's move towards ethanol being blended with petrol from this year 2025, right? And in that process, produce ethanol for the market. But historically, all these sugar industries were always set up close to the sugarcane uh command area, right? So typically what happens or what used to happen very heavily in the past is even today, to a great extent, these models are what exist. Each sugar factory had a demarcated command area, that is the geographic region within which it can procure all the sugarcane which is produced there, right? It is typically the first choice in that area. So typically, there used to be a factory set up close to each command area. That is a geographic area where large amount of sugarcane is grown, close to that, a sugar factory used to be set up. Historically, Greenfield was large in the western India. It did not have pan-India presence, as you know, India is a very large country, pan-India presence is not so easy. So they were largely in west, right? Focus more on Maharashtra and Gujarat, that's where their footprints were. So now they were looking at how to grow. Every company wants to keep growing, every, and this company was doing well and it had a good debt equity. It was in a very sound financial position, doing well on revenue, doing well on profitability. It has also got into newer lines like ethanol. So it was looking to expand and thereby grow. So in this context, they were looking at south India because that will give them a geographical expansion and also some kind of a risk balance. Otherwise, they are heavily dependent on one region, whereas this would put them into a some kind of a risk mitigation on dependence on one region alone, right? So that is what they were eyeing to do. And in that context only, they were looking at this Sunrise Sugars, right? So while Greenfield Agro was doing so well, etc., what was Sunrise Sugar? Sunrise Sugar also had a lot of assets because it had a full factory, right? But it was having its own problems. It had three sugar mills under ethanol distillery in Karnataka, but it has, it had huge debts. Operationally, it was doing well, but because of the debt, it was struggling. Though it had strong infrastructure, etc., it has been struggling with liquidity issues. There were about 800 crores in debts and it had inefficient working capital management. The company also had about 450 crores of accumulated tax losses. So anybody who is taking over, there was this added carrot of accumulated tax losses which may be available, right? This huge debt had pushed Sunrise into NCLT under the Insolvency and Bankruptcy Code. So the company was not doing well and it was it was already under Insolvency and Bankruptcy Code. So from the deal perspective, because Greenfield was in a good position and Sunrise was in a, in a, in a insolvency scenario, the deal was structured as a all-cash deal so that it is really attractive for all the uh stakeholders in Sunrise Sugars to accept the plan and sell the company and go. So the deal value was fixed at 1,200 crores, right? And the goal, like I mentioned earlier, was to enable Greenfield to get regional expansion so they are able to grow into newer regions and also increase their ethanol capacity. I already mentioned Greenfield already had its own distillery, but Sunrise also had a distillery in Karnataka. So it would boost the overall ethanol capacity. So the whole strategy was based on synergy and scale of operation and getting this tax optimization benefit, right? This was the background to the deal which was being looked at. So in this context, let's look at each of these aspects, right? What was the strategic rationale to this whole thing? It gives, for this company, Greenfield, it gives access to the high-yield sugarcane zone in south India, which all these days they did not have any access to because they were based only in Gujarat and Maharashtra. It also adds a modern ethanol distillery to the Greenfield's portfolio because this company, Sunrise Sugars, had a well-laid-out ethanol distillery also there. The huge tax losses they had created was a significant potential savings for the buyer, which was also another major logical reason why they were looking at it. Typically, what happens is these sugar companies distribute across India and because they were selling from the west into the south market and all that, their logistics costs are obviously higher. By opening up in the south, they could reduce the logistics costs and supply to some areas from the Karnataka factory while the west deals with west and north and all that. So this is another synergy which they thought would bring in about 120 crores of annual cost reduction. And overall, it complements ethanol blending policy of the government of India so that you are there where the government is also planning to take India into, you are part of the base with that, right? So these were the strategic rationale for this deal to be considered, right? How the deal was structured? The deal was structured in a manner that 70% of the 1,200 crores required will come either as bank debts or ECBs, right? External commercial borrowings. External commercial borrowings could also be from banks abroad. So essentially, external commercial borrowings is borrowings made from outside India. So ECB, Sunbank, 70% should come from that and 30% to come from their own equity, which is essentially from internal accruals and if required, they will do a promoter allotment and bring in money. This was the thought process. There was a valuation done and the discounted cash flow equity valuation was a huge 2,0238 crore valuation, whereas the final price offered was only 1,200 crores, which itself was eight times EBITDA, right? So this was what was being offered while the projected valuation was significantly higher. Why is that huge difference there? It is the adjustment primarily arising because of the insolvency and liquidity risks attached to Sunrise Ushavie, a well-running company. Right? In terms of Forex risk mitigation, as they are planning to take some external commercial borrowings, it was also decided that they will go in for a hedge at forward contracts at 82 rupees per dollar. Of course, today itself it has gone beyond that, when this deal was being talked about, 82 was a good forward contract to take. With all this, what was happening, the debt to equity rises from point eight to 1.5. So it's not going to be significantly large, it is just going to go up from point eight to 1.5, which is still well within the norms for industries of this nature, well within the norms for industries of this nature, right? That is the key thing to, important thing to understand. Coming to post-acquisition integration, they were looking at, one second. Yeah, coming to post-acquisition integration, the company was looking at doing a purchase price allocation where they identified that inventory is overstated by about 50 crores and that was corrected. And they also ended up creating a 320 crore goodwill, which needs to be tested annually. So as you all know, when acquisition is done under India's, the accounting for that will have to undergo a fair value determination at that point of time for all the assets and liabilities which are being taken over and the purchase price will have to be allocated to those assets and liabilities which are being taken out. Whatever is the difference between the purchase consideration, which is in this case 1,200 crores and the fair values identified for the tangible and identified intangible assets, that difference will go as goodwill or capital reserve as the case may be. So this is the broad understanding there. And that process, they had identified 320 crore to be goodwill, which has to be tested annually. Now, I wanted to spend some time here and give you some perspective and understanding. The buyer is doing a valuation using DCF model because they know the industry, they can prepare some projections for this and basis that they have prepared. And they have identified if they do what they want to do with this Sunrise, they can actually get 2,0238 crores value for it as of date on a discounted basis, right? That is what it means. But do I have to pay that to somebody else, then why would I do the business, right? So normally, the valuation which they are doing is more internal to say that this is the value I can extract out of it. What do I extract? It is the value as it stands of the company plus what synergy benefits can come. For example, we were talking about the 120 crore saving every year on logistics costs because I am currently sending from west to south. So that's an additional benefit. Now that 120 crores is a savings I am making and I don't have to necessarily pay it to the counterparty, that is the seller, because he is not making that. It is not his current business. His current business and my business together creates an opportunity for this synergy benefit, right? I want to bring some thoughts and ideas here, that's why I am talking about it. The second part, which also brings a gap always, is that I may be able to do some things which the current owner is not able to do. For instance, this Greenfield Agro has a great name, so they are able to sell some portion as value-added packaged sugars, right? Across the country and that has a brand recognition and there is a price benefit which is coming. Now, I could add more volume to that, which is as if I have supplies from the south factory also coming, which, with which I can do the same kind of branded product sales into the south, which Sunrise will not be able to do at all. I am bringing in this new value into it. So that also adds the value. But these are values which I am bringing to table and I am not necessarily going to share. That is why the equity value which I compute is not fully paid out. So normally, what happens in a negotiation is we look at what is that, that company can do on its own as it stands and what is that I can do with that company being available. So there is a gap between these two, there may be some negotiation, some portion might get paid, right? So that way, my valuation with all the benefits is 2,0238 crore and probably the valuation of the company as it exists without any additional this thing is only 980 crores or 880 crores, sorry, 880 crores, right? That is why 1,200 minus 880 crores is 320 crores of goodwill coming. So look at 880 crores and 2,200 crores, somebody can literally triple the value by changing the parameters, changing the way the game is played. Major contributor for that is Sunrise is a bulk commodity producer. Greenfield is a branded product producer and seller. Now this makes a huge difference, the margins can be significantly higher, right? Those are the things which are considered in the difference. So just to give you the perspective, I wanted to talk about it. And though all these numbers are changed, by and large, these are the kind of differences which were there in the practical case also, right? Now, so in first thing about post-acquisition, one is about the accounting, the purchase price allocation, where 320 crores of goodwill will have to be tested annually came up. The second thing, to make a better process and better operations of the entity, they came up with implementation of activity-based costing, right? And then they also centralized the procurement. Obviously, they already have some procurement process and procurement mechanism which is in place for the Gujarat and Maharashtra units. Now, it becomes much more useful to bring these Sunrise requirements also into the same team. So you have single centralized procurement facility. The third thing which normally has again issues are about the PFESI and compliances to be aligned between the buying company and the acquired company or acquired entity. In this case, Sunrise and Greenfield on the other side. So that is also something which was addressed. Transfer pricing for ethanol was also looked at and considered. Now, these are some things which were taken up. So there were also other things which needs to be considered, right? This ethanol sales, why transfer pricing was becoming important? Because it was getting sold within the group. So obviously, you need to establish a good transfer pricing policy to ensure that you are getting the right pricing and the right sharing between group entity, especially because there is conflict of interest which are coming, right? In addition to ESA and PF, right? Compliance which were to be introduced across, there were also some GST disputes which are also to be taken care of. So these two are the dimensions which are coming up in the post-acquisition period in respect of this entity. Coming to the regulatory and tax strategy, as I talked about, there was this tax loss of 450 crores, right? Which were permitted to be carried forward under IBC because section 79 specifically provides that where carry forward is normally available, even though there is change in ownership structure, if it is based on a resolution plan under IBC, it will be permitted. So that specific exemption there provided the advantage to Greenfield to take benefit of this 450 crore carry forward loss which was there. As I mentioned, the GST issue was addressed, 80 crores of dispute which was there, right? Then the dispute about classification of ethanol was also discussed finalized finally at 12% GST with the part. So there was clarity brought in, there was finality brought into the complication which was lying there. Coming to the other dimension of regulatory requirements, with regard to the planned ECB for this acquisition, FEMA compliance was to be considered. So automatic route was followed and there was also specifically the requirement to file requirement to file Form ECB 1 for the ECB being taken. So it is not Form 83, it should be Form ECB 1, which was also filed. Then from a SEBI perspective, as I told you, it was a listed company which was doing the acquisition. So from the SEBI perspective, we saw it in an earlier case also, there is need for board approval, there is probably a requirement for open offer, right? Which had to be done because you are acquiring a significant stake through the resolution plan. If the plan did not provide for all the shareholders, what will be done? Then it would trigger an open offer requirement. There were also disclosures to be done through the process of the resolution to SEBI. So all these were to be addressed. That is the regulatory side of the transaction. So all this, what did it bring about? So the DCF model which was originally forecast, it was showing that there will be growth ranging from 11% to 15% over the period, right? To the cash flows. So cash flows will grow by about 11 to 15% in the five-year period for which projections were made. And the terminal growth was considered at 4%, resulting in equity value of about 2,0238 crores. But as I explained, this 2,0238 crores is based on the existing Sunrise plus the leverage to make Sunrise sweat better because you are removing all the problems which it is going through. And then to top it, we are also adding what can come through synergy benefits, what can come through new avenues which we can create, which is purely what Greenfield is bringing to the table. New avenues which we can create, which is purely what Greenfield is bringing to the table. So the. R O I from this was considered to be fifteen percent by third year, right? This is what finally came. It was not only in paper, post facto when they analyzed after three years, they had achieved a fifteen percent R O I. Then E P S dilution which was happening was significantly offset by the synergy gains. So they were actually becoming positive. There was logistic savings, there were margins improvement in ethanol, we talked about how. Arms length pricing evaluation was done and how ethanol. Uh, the, the, the capacity can, uh, were increased, enhanced between. The existing plant and the new plant in Karnataka. So overall, the ethanol margins also improved because of all this. With all this, sunrise turnaround was a complete success under Greenfield. From being an insolvent entity, sunrise became. A profitable venture in about three years' time delivering fifteen percent R O I. This is what ultimately translated from this acquisition over the period, next three years period. Now, with this background, we are going to be now going into the specific case questions, case study based questions. And. We will look at each of these. And I'll tell you, it is not the B, every, every question is not, answer is not B like last time. For one of the case studies which was in that event, this time it's not going to be so high hope. Right, so let's see what it does. So let's look at the first case question. How was goodwill calculated in the Greenfield Sunrise acquisition? Is it based on A consideration paid plus fair value of N C I minus net assets? N C I is non-controlling interest. The second is B consideration paid minus fair value of identifiable assets. C book value of sunrise equity. And D sunrise EBITDA into five percent. Which of these is correct? Any thoughts on it? Someone has said B. Already we are going into B again this year, this, this week also. So what do you think? It is B? Okay, some more answer, let me see, some more person has said B. Okay, any other thoughts, anyone for any other thing other than B? Because last time we saw too many Bs, so let it be, we can't leave it. Okay. So last time it was C, it's what somebody was mentioning, okay, maybe it was C all through. So let's see what it is this time, right? Where is that situation? Yeah. So the correct answer is A, I will explain why. A is the consideration paid, consideration paid is for the owner's equity. Then fair value of non-controlling interest is the fair value of all that which we are not buying. Right, minus net assets. So what happens in resolution in a, in a listed company in many cases is that. The promoter's shares are taken over. The retail shares, five percent, ten percent, fifteen percent, twenty five percent, which is in the market. Is probably left as it is, that will be the fair value of the net. Non-controlling interests, right? So the equity value is consideration paid plus fair value of the shareholders who are going to be continuing. Minus net assets. Now what is going to be taken over in the resolution plan is basically all the assets. So wherever there are assets, that has to be directed, right? So this is one small difference I wanted you to look at between A and B. Wherever fair value of N C I is involved, that needs to be also considered. In fact, that's why I put this question, so there is some clarity on some difference which arises. The second is about. The final pricing method. Finally, on what basis did they agree on the negotiated price to be? Is it on D C F? Is it on book value? Is it on E V by EBITDA multiple or is it based on liquidation value? So someone has said C. Any other thoughts on this? How did they finally negotiate the price? Was it based on D C F or was it based on book value? E V by EBITDA multiple or liquidation value? Which of the four is the basis? Anyone, any other thoughts? Okay. Yes, Priyanka, anything?
Book value.
Book value, okay. So B, B or C, till now somebody has said C, someone has said B, right? And someone has said A, okay. So let's look at the answers now, yes, someone more I'll also add it further. C. The right answer is C, as we discussed. After the D C F etcetera was there, finally but the price was negotiated at eight times E V by EBITDA, thousand two hundred crores. Right? This was factoring in solvency status of Sunrise and like I said, many other. Strategic benefits which we bring to the table from. From Greenfield, right? So the final method of negotiation, so why we have to deal with this is another thing I want you to understand. Now, the valuation which is done is more for advisory, that is not necessarily the price at which you do the deal. The valuation is to justify to yourself that you are making a good investment largely. It also is to guide you in the negotiation to not overpay. These are the primary considerations which needs to be there. So that's something I wanted you to understand that. So there could be differences between what the buyer does his own valuation advisory. Versus what is it which gets sold. We need to also talk about. The tax loss utilization, right? We all know section seventy nine is there. Tax losses will not be permitted if there is a ownership change beyond forty nine percent, fifty percent and above. There is no permission to carry forward the tax losses. So in that context, in this case, could Greenfield fully utilize sunrise tax losses post-acquisition? The possible answers as A, yes, unrestricted. B, no, due to forty nine percent ownership change, more than forty nine percent ownership change, it cannot be done. C, only if approved by tax authorities. D, only for specific segments, not the total four fifty but for some segments, right? Like ethanol, sugar. Limited to one of them. So there are four options. What is your choice? Is it S unrestricted? Or no, because there is more than forty nine percent ownership change? Or it will be permitted only if approved by the tax authorities? Or that it is available but only for limited segments and not for all. So someone has said option C, right? I'm going to ask, Spreeti, will you be able to unmute your phone and say why C?
Hello sir, uh, because as per section seventy nine of the income tax act. If the ownership percentage is exceeding seventy nine percent, uh, sorry, forty nine percent. Uh, then it won't apply and there is no, uh, what to say. Unconditional, uh, the option A is ruled out, completely ruled out, uh. Yes, unrestricted, it won't apply here in this case. And as specified in the case scenario, uh, the. It is up to the income tax authorities to, you know, uh, grant in special circumstances. Especially in this case where insolvency, N C L T, it is undergoing N C L T proceedings. So I find option C would be appropriate.
Okay, so.
And D is looked into. Only for specific segments, as you mentioned, like ethanol and all of it. Uh, but I would still go for option C, I find option C is the appropriate answer to this.
Okay, so let's look at the answer and the rationale. Option C is the right answer, that's why I wanted you to tell why, right? Now.
I hope I'm right, I'm on the right track.
You are right about option C, right? Because it says that under section seventy nine, normally if there is a. Majority stake change, ownership change, carry forward is not permitted. But certain exceptions are provided and one of the exceptions is a resolution plan approved under the. Uh, I B C, but it goes on to say that after it has been suitably. Considered that is after taking the submissions of the tax department into consideration. So without the clearance of the tax department, you can't get it into this thing, it's not automatic, right? So it has to be with their clearance, so that is why option C is more appropriate. Than others, it's not automatic, it has to be with their. Uh, uh, their appearance and their presentation to N C L T on. The allowability or not on a case-to-case basis.
Sir, I would want to know, uh, if whether option D, even I find it closely related. To, you know, uh, uh, to, you know, arrive at the answer, uh, option D. So, um, can you provide any reason for it? I mean, why not? You can, uh, between the two, C and D, D should not be resorted to and. Because I somehow feel, huh, fine.
I will explain. See.
Yes, sir.
Tax benefits flow from the provisions of tax laws. Right, provisions of tax laws. So what does the provision of tax laws say and it has to be seen in the context of the current discussion. Right? Current discussion. In the current discussion, we are talking about sugar industry and manufacturing industry. So basically seventy nine applies. Basically seventy nine applies, right? That is the carry forward permission would be there in the normal course. Then comes the next step, okay, if it is applicable, then when is it applicable? As long as there is no change in ownership, it can continue to apply. The moment there is a change more than fifty percent, right? Then it won't apply. The exception which is given specifically says, right? That in the case of a resolution plan approved under insolvency, after affording a reasonable opportunity of being heard. Right, to the principal commissioner or commissioner, that is after taking the objections if any of the. Principal Commissioner or Commissioner of Intact, that's only this can be given, so it is not free flow. It is clearly not by segment, seventy nine does not talk about specific segments being approved for. Tax loss being carried forward under I B C. Under I B C, it says clearly that it will be based on a decision to be made. In every case which is filed, every resolution plan which is filed, after hearing objections. If any from the commissioner or principal commissioner. So this is why.
As a whole, it will be looked into.
Yeah, so you have to look at the. Correct, you have to look at the provisions of the act, all tax benefits flow based on the tax loss. So here the tax law is clear that it is based on this premise, right?
Okay, fine, sir.
Thank you. The answer is right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So coming to the fourth question, it is on costing technique. Which costing method was used to evaluate logistic synergies? Activity-based costing, target costing. Lifestyle costing. Or sorry, not lifestyle, life cycle costing and standard costing. Which method was used to evaluate the logistics synergies by the company? D standard costing, option A, somebody has said D, somebody has said A. See, whatever we are answering, we should also answer in context of the case law which we have read, right? So the whole case law is there for you, based on that case law only, the questions are coming. So in this particular case, uh, one more person has said A again. So we have two answers still now, A and D, anybody for B and C also? So we have to look at the case study and the answers flowing from that, so that is very important in this. So in this case, what happens is, the case study specifically said that they had deployed activity-based costing. Right, that's exactly what they implemented. So it was the A B C which helped identify inefficient cost drivers and improve the logistics. So we also saw that there were disputes about classification of ethanol. Sorry, classification of ethanol. And based on that dispute, then they finally have that resolution arrived at by discussing with the department and taking necessary this thing. So what are the final rate? There are four rates which generally apply to GSD. Five percent, twelve percent, eighteen percent and twenty eight percent. So B, B, yes, many people are saying B. So let's hope it is B. Option B is right. This is exactly what was being discussed in the case study also. Ethanol falls under the twelve percent GST layer, that. This is critical for input tax credit reconciliation during merger integration, very, very important in addressing that also. Now we go to the descriptive questions. As you know, you have to write a detailed answer for this, so we are going to be presenting the question and we are going to discuss it in some detail as to what goes into it. So the first descriptive question is, how should Greenfield account for inventory overstatement in Sunrise Financials? We saw that the inventory was overstated in Sunrise Financials. So how should Greenfield now account for it on acquisition? There are standards which we need to consider, accounting standards, a basis which how do we deal with this error? Do we all agree it's an error? And if we agree it's an error, how it should be dealt with? Any thoughts? Please share some thoughts and then we can discuss further on it. So let's look at what is the focus which should be there. Once again, let me take the answer, yeah. So we all agree, A, it's an error, right? So it should be adjusted. The inventory has to be reduced by fifty crores. Because it relates to the past period. We need to we need to treat it as a prior period error. Right? In the consolidated financial statement. And in a prior period error, how you should do it under India S? Can somebody tell me how a prior period error should be adjusted in the India S? The prior period error will be adjusted to the previous years, if it is relating to the previous years, which I presume is the case here. It will be adjusted to the P and L of the previous year shown. And to that extent, it will be adjusted in the opening balance of carry forward reserves, et cetera. And in accordance with schedule three, we will also show that specifically in the statement of changes in other equity. As opening balance, less adjustment on account of prior period error or change in accounting policy. Fifty crores. Restated balance as on one four previous year beginning, right? And then current year transaction. So it gets specifically highlighted. And of course, there can be a disclosure note also which is referred to, which describes the reasoning for why this adjustment has been made, because fifty crores is a materially large sum in this case, right? Is that clear? Any further questions you have on this? See, because we were talking about a listed company, India Supplies, so we have to do this. Now if it was under years, obviously the treatment could be just show it as a prior period item in the current financials. You don't have to restate the previous year financials. So that is the big difference in how it is addressed. Please feel free to ask questions if you want some further clarity or anything on these answers, right? The second one we are going to look at is the discounted cash flow valuation performed by Greenfield Agro. Explain the key assumptions used in the DCF model. What were the key assumptions used in the DCF model? Then critically evaluate why the DCF derived valuation is higher than the final acquisition price, right? A very important question. Then. Suggest two adjustments Greenfield could make to the DCF model to arrive at a more conservative valuation, justifying that thousand two hundred crore pricing. Right? Because ultimately you have to find where the differences are arising from, right? So let's look at any thoughts you had. It's a little complex matter. I'm only looking for general answers. I'm not looking for specific answers on this. Specific answer will come here, but that's not what you need to, you can write it in general terms, right? So what are the key assumptions used in the DCF model? That's right, largely straight coming from the, uh, uh, case study. So any idea what are the key assumptions which are being used? Any thoughts? Anyone wanting to add there? Okay, so let's look at the key assumptions. So the key assumptions are that first of all, the free cash flows, I explained, free cash flows are growing between eleven to fifteen percent over the five years, right? So there is a significant growth of eleven to fifteen percent, which is happening in the five-year period. And then a terminal growth rate of four percent. The discount rate considered is twelve percent. And a debt rate of eight hundred crores was considered, this valuation. So discount rate was taken at twelve percent. The terminal growth rate was taken at four percent. And during the five-year period, there is eleven to fifteen percent growth in the free cash flows. These are the key assumptions which are considered in the DCF model. Then let's look at the critical evaluation of the DCF valuation versus the value at which the pricing was done. So.
The reduction is majorly because of the insolvency that has taken place.
Yes.
Okay, so that is what is coming here. The financial distress is shown here, uh, the value, uh, the reduction is taking place.
Yes. Correct. So look at it like this. I, I'll give you an example. If you are today buying gold, you will pay the market price, right? Yes or no? How many you say no? We all agree, we will pay the gold market price? Okay, so you go and buy a twenty-four karat gold coin or gold bar from a reputed company. You will pay at market price, yes, agreed. But if there is some twenty-two karat jewelry which, let's say, your relative has and he wants to desperately sell it. Because he has some debt to pay off and all that, he wants you to buy it. You will not pay him the market rate because this jewelry you may not want. You may want to change it, you may want to do so many things with it. So obviously, you may not want to pay the same market rate. Forget the emotions aside, right? Even if he goes to the shop, they don't pay him the same rate, they pay less. Because again, they will say, oh no, this is not the jewelry design which I might sell. I will buy it at a lower price because I will have to re-convert, et cetera. So there is a distress value. Now typically, even in a, a insolvency, they ask for two valuations. One is the fair value and second is the liquidation value. If there is only one value, why would they even ask for two values, right? So even under this thing, there is a difference between something which is in the normal course and something under distress. So here we have been very optimistic about the growth. We have been optimistic about the ability to continue. So we have taken only twelve percent discounting rate. Now if you just change it as fourteen percent discounting rate, adding two percent towards risk. And if you say instead of four percent terminal growth, there will be only two percent terminal growth. The valuation will nearly half, two thousand two thirty-eight will become half, more close to thousand two hundred, right? Now these are the basis of the reality. Which we need to consider. So this is how there is always a different perspective on value. Sometimes the seller thinks, oh my God, I got thousand two hundred for this and I was able to settle so many with some haircut. It's a brilliant deal. The other side feels also brilliant, because I bought it at thousand two hundred, but it's worth much, much more for me, right? A deal is a win-win when something like this happens. A deal need not necessarily mean win-lose always or lose-win always. It can be like this, right? Because you need to consider the synergy in which I am selling, so what I can get. And what the buyer is going to do can be something different. So obviously, there could be a different value to it. So these are all to get that perspective, I took some of these. Maybe some, some of these complex questions may not come for you in the exam, but I wanted you to get that perspective. Right? Now the third question which I wanted to take up was.
Sir, uh, if I'm not mistaken, uh, sorry, this third question remains to be answered.
Third question we.
O- okay, that has been, huh, that has been covered, right? The adjustments made.
Correct, correct.
Okay, conservative valuation. Okay, okay, fine, fine.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Right?
I'm sorry.
That's what I was talking about, that how this conservative valuation and this differs.
Okay, okay. I, I thought there is something more to it also. The third question has got something more to it also.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I just wanted to give a perspective. So that is the point, in fact, I was also talking about that the third part about how would differ between the two valuation is too complex to actually come in an exam. But I wanted you to all have that perspective, that there could be differences. And there are different ways of looking at the same thing and everything is actually right also. Now coming to the next question, which is, uh, the third one for this case study. Right? The question is on connected with the ECB. Right? Greenfield Agro funded thirty percent of Sunrise Sugar's acquisition through external commercial borrowings. We, we originally saw that overall seventy percent debt and thirty percent equity is what they are going to do. In that seventy percent, it's going to be made up of bank and ECB. Now we have clarity that thirty percent they have raised through external commercial borrowings, right? Now, when they raise external commercial borrowing, first and foremost, what are the key FEMA compliance requirements with regard to external commercial borrowings? Then the second one is discuss the foreign forex risk and how Greenfield mitigated it. The third part we are going to look at is analyze one limitation of using ECB for such acquisitions. One limitation of using ECBS for such acquisition. Everything has a pros and cons, right? We need to see it from both sides. Maybe in spite of some cons, we will still choose something, but we need to have that understanding. That's why I put that also there. So let's take one by one. Can somebody give some ideas on what are the key FEMA compliance requirements for ECB? These are standard questions which may come up. So please, any answers? Any suggestion on it? Yes, somebody has raised hand, I think. You can unmute yourself and speak, please. I think maybe that's not coming. Okay, so let's look at the answers for this. So the key FEMA compliance requirements are that A, you should either see that it is under automatic approval group or approval route, right? So if it is automatic route, then you don't have to specifically apply for approval. To be under the automatic route should be within the RBA limits, that is not more than seven fifty million you, you annually. There should be a minimum average maturity period of five years for amounts above fifty million. The induce should be for CapEx or equity acquisition and not for working capital. And ECB should also get reported to the AD Bank. Form eighty-three has changed now, form ECB is there, right? So these are the key requirements which are there immediately to be adhered. So there are limitations about how much you can borrow. What is the minimum average maturity period? That is how soon you can return it. There are also caps on interest which you can pay, which has not been specifically highlighted here. There are restrictions on end use, what you can use it for. For example, in this case, it can be used for CapEx or equity acquisition, not for working capital, right? Of course, today the ECB has changed, so you have to look at the latest ECB requirements. When this acquisition happened, there were certain additional restrictions which were there. But these are the three, four parameters on which FEMA compliance requirements on ECB rights and the fifth one last is reporting, right? Reporting of ECB data. Then we can discuss about the second part of the question, which is how the forex risk was mitigated. Now, what is the forest risk here? We are borrowing in foreign currency, so we have to repay in foreign currency. But what is the business of the company? The company is manufacturing sugar, ethanol. Mostly sugar and ethanol are sold within India, so possibility of foreign exchange earnings is limited, right? However, with the new thought, right, with the new thought that ethanol will be permitted for exports. There could be some exports also happening. There could be some exports also happening, right? But still we have a forex risk. The moment we are taking some foreign loan and there is a repayment to be made in foreign, foreign currency, there is a forex risk. Now the next question comes, how do we mitigate it, right? So what does this company face really? If the rate goes up tomorrow, yes, hedging is the answer somebody has also given, right? If the rate goes up tomorrow, we need to pay a higher sum for repayment. Which if we had not considered, then we have a problem. Right? Then we have a problem. So the mitigation are two, two channels are there. Largely this is what you will find. The first one is forward contracts or derivatives, which you can take, different kinds of derivatives. Forward contracts is the simplest of the derivative, right? So what happens in a forward contract? You are prefixing the rate. Whether it goes up or down, you are prefixed, so you have stability. You are not getting the best price, but you are getting stability. You are getting the best price only when it goes beyond. But you never know how the market will, uh, you know, act in future. The second part of a mitigation process for foreign currency could be a potential foreign currency earnings happening. Let's suppose on this ECB, every year let's say I have to pay hundred thousand dollars as interest. I'm just giving a hypothetical number, hundred thousand dollars as interest. Now because of this two plans, I am going to be in a position to export ethanol and every year I am also going to earn two hundred thousand on just exporting ethanol. Then anyway I am going to get foreign currency. That foreign currency can pay for this foreign currency. So if the price goes up from today's eighty-two to eighty-five, then my receipts will be also at eighty-five, my payment will also be at eighty-five. I am getting a natural hedge. This is called as a natural hedge. If the price goes down to eighty-one, my receipts will get poorer to eighty-one, but my payment will also be only at eighty-one. So the extent of this hundred thousand which is covered, it's called as a natural hedge. So companies look at broadly these two aspects to mitigate the foreign currency risk. And in the process, they may leave some portion as unhedged. Why do they leave some portion as unhedged? Previous case also in the last week or the, uh, before in a case study, we looked at it. The company had a policy of only covering fifty percent by way of forward cover. The reason for that is on fifty percent, they want to take the risk because there can be a plus or a minus. So you could also benefit at times. So you want to keep it flexible. So this is basically to ensure that you have some risk appetite up to which you are taking the risk. Yes, especially if the currency is volatile, so you hold that. And then for some portion you cover so that you are not fully at risk. So this is how the risk mitigation is done. It is not zero risk always, right? There is always some risk which is there. So you try and mitigate it. So broadly, the two methods of mitigation are forward covers or natural hedge as the case may be. Hope that was clear. And then we go to the third part of the question, which is what is the major limitation, one, any one major limitation of ECB? Clearly, one immediate thing we can all think of is increase in the debt burden. So point eight has now become one point five in this case study we saw, right? The moment this increases, of course, one point five is still within reasonable limits, within reasonable limits, but still it is much higher than point eight, it is double of point eight. So there is always the increased risk of concern of breaching some debt covenant and possible credit downgrade. So when my debt ratio was pointed the credit rating agencies would have probably given me AA plus. Now, even though they may not be very bad, they may not give me AA plus, they may say AA minus. So there could be some amount of downgrade in the credit rating which can happen because of this. So this is one limitation which we can talk about specifically, right? Now, with that, we are coming to the end of this case study. Uh, we are also close to this thing. So what I would suggest is maybe we can take a ten minute break. Uh, it's seven fifty, eight o'clock we will reassemble and go with the next case study. Trust that is fine with all of you. A ten minute break to. Good, thank you. So let's reconnect and straight start at eight o'clock. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank. Good. Yeah, good evening. So in the second session, we are going to be looking at the case study of farm, farm, sorry, from farm to or fresh from farm, fresh from farm, right? The company went from farm to IPO. That was their plan. And fresh from farm with a brand name of FQ is what they were looking at. The case study focuses on how a strategic growth can be made and how the needs can be met by certain specific business models. Then what issues are there in costing compliance, et cetera. So just to give a background to this, of course, many of you may be aware and many of you maybe have experienced it. In food, there is a lot of awareness about organic food, fresh foods, and also some amount of traceability to the food so that if there is any issue, it can be identified where the problem lies, et cetera. So this is something which has been growing and especially in the urban markets, there is more awareness and more interest in ensuring that these things are met. Whether hundred percent of the market has moved to this? No, not at all. But there is a significant market which is there for such organic and fresh produce expectations, right, in market. In two thousand fifteen, as early as two thousand fifteen, Rahul Reddy from Hyderabad idealized, he understood this potential need which will be emerging or which will be growing significantly in the coming years. And with that, he started this idea of fresh from farm. That was the logo and that was the motto. And with that, he made his brand as FQ. So he started as a small venture and that homologued over the period into a leading organic retail brand. This happened through a blend of strategic financial planning, activity-based costing being applied and focus being given on the company's profitability, stability, growth, et cetera. Compliance and significantly digital innovations and digital trust to the whole thing. So this is what made it into a large chain of stores which were supplying fresh from farm organic producers. Right? So initially in two thousand fifteen sixteen, when Rahul Reddy started this, he just started with ten lakhs and a small five hundred square foot office space. Right? So started investing on some cold storage, then some basic logistics, et cetera, to do a certain amount of deliveries. He found that there is interest in it. In that early period, his challenges were, A, first to find more capital because he had only ten lakhs to do it. So limited capital. So there was restriction on what he can do. Farmers were reluctant to deal with him because they don't know and they were concerned about delayed payments. Consumer had doubts on the other side, whether the product was actually organic or not because ultimately when you buy a vegetable or a fruit, it's a vegetable or fruit. There is no method by which a common consumer can easily find whether this is organic or not. Organic source, right? So initial days, what did he do? He wanted to build the business model. So he started offering the farmers a fifteen percent premium and also ensured a minimum daily procurement volume. So he said, okay, boss, I'm not just coming to you for one-off. I am going to be regular. I will take fifteen percent premium to you I'll pay and also I'll take a minimum daily volume of so much. Then on the other side, what he did was he made transparent displays of the product where it was originating from, what was the harvest date, who was the farmer, et cetera. Because it was a small shop, he was a single store mechanism. So he could put all this. Now, this transparency gave a lot of comfort to the customers. So on one side, he started building trust with the suppliers and on the other side, he was giving comfort to the customers. This is how he initially started the business, which started making break even within a year's time. So this was a critical period where by building the right trust and confidence, he was able to get the business going and the business model was being set up. Right? The second next phase, right, which is what we were talking about, there were more this thing about in fifteen sixteen, the whole thing was about one small store, very small cold storage. The supplier resistance had to be overcome by price assurance and quantity assurance, slowly building customer trust with transparency like I was explaining. Limited capital, ten lakhs only he had and he had invested that much only, right? He did not have too much money at that time. The whole thing was focused on building a reputation, consistency and then arrive at break even because you need the business to grow, you need it to be stable and financially viable. So this was the process by which the phase one was crossed. Then came phase two where he was able to raise funds. So he had a dilemma, whether to take bank loan or whether to go in for equity dilution. So at that time, he chose to go with angel investors because his initial capital was very low. Taking high debt with just ten lakhs of capital would have severe impact of interest cost on the entity which would deeply erode the profitability and may put the whole business into a very high risk mechanism. So he took two crores as investment with a twenty percent equity dilution. So significant dilution because it was early stage money coming in, so the valuations were low. And additionally, because now he had a capital of two point one crores, he went in for a bank term loan of about one crore. Right? So with this, they were able to get cold storage investments, et cetera, in place. The capital budgeting showed that the NPV and IRR analysis were all showing a promising eighteen percent IRR on the cold storage units which were being invested into. All right? Now, while all this happened, in three years he was to do this, two thousand eighteen, there were unseasonal rains. This unseasonal rains in two thousand eighteen led to a significant price increase. There was suddenly a forty percent cost price. Significant, right? So it disrupts the way you do business. So while this was happening, he could not significantly increase the prices to the customers because that would dampen the customer confidence and trust which he was trying to build and it would negatively impact and probably he will start losing customers significantly. So to tide over the immediate problems, he took a fifty lakh order at facility, right? And that was a major response he did. And as he has been always transparent about the way he conducted business, he said prices will have now have a ten percent weather surcharge. Ten percent weather surcharge, right? So which meant the customers were being told clearly, boss, because of the rains and all that affecting, I have no choice but to pass on something, but this is my transparency there and this is how I am doing it. Instead of just a blind price increase, this kind of a very transparent tool actually builds confidence. So he did that. And then he also looked at, yeah, I'm getting all my goods only from one place. Now should I start looking at other locations also from where I should start buying? So instead of just buying from Andhra, now should I look at buying from Maharashtra and Karnataka so that there can be some balance to this thing and if I have a problem in one region, I can get from some other region, I can balance out costs and deliveries. So this was the way in which he started scaling up and the way he dealt with problems which arose during scaling up. So three responses he took when he started having this price hike happening because of the sudden unexpected rains. He took a OD facility so there is some financial stability. He introduced a weather surcharge as a part of the business processes and pricing mechanism. So again, there is transparency and the weather surcharge goes away when the season changes, et cetera. And he also looked at diversifying his source for input materials. So this way, he started taking some mitigating actions for problems can be there. With that, he scaled up and after scaling, obviously you need to look at how to make it efficient because ultimately you should make profits. So he applied ABC principles to analyze cost drivers and analysis of cost drivers identified that the last mile delivery cost was nearly E rupees per kg and there was inefficient cold storage power usage. These two things he identified as some critical issues which could be addressed. So one of the things he looked at was to improve the delivery route optimization which led to nearly one and a half lakhs or one point two lakh savings per month. Then he started packing shifts in the night. As you know, some of these some of these meters, some not meters, some of these tariffs, electricity tariffs have different rates during peak time, which is the manufacturing time, which is the first and second shift and third shift which is low on utilization. So there are lower costs in the third shifts in some of the tariffs. So by shifting to nighttime packaging, electricity cost reductions were achieved. It was also increasing the overall efficiency of the place utilization, et cetera, in the whole operations. There was also standard costing which was implemented. Right? So by implementing standard causes, for example, if you take tomatoes, twenty five cages will be there, standard cost. And variance analysis from that where looked at to see that monsoon or other aspects which are coming and affecting the prices are monitored and the variance plus and minuses kept within norms or within reasonable norms by balancing different types of materials, et cetera, which are brought in and sold. See vegetables, what happens is there are lot of choice of vegetables. So to some extent, you can manage by having some vegetables missing on some days to see that you can balance the overall cost arbitrage which you are having there. So you need to balance all this and do it. So this was all happening and at that point of time, he had more than ten outlets which were fully operational, right? By the time he was in the phase three, he had more than ten operational units which were well set and running. And at that time, he computed that the break even required was to cover three point nine lakhs of fixed cost with the average contribution being fifteen rupees per kg. Now it is, it is in, in a business like this, mixed vegetable products, right? In a business like this, you can't do the contribution margin at each item and then try to do it because there is always a blend which is going and it is very difficult to do it at individual level to monitor and manage. So on a daily basis, you see, are you buying? That's why he said, you know, on some days you can drop one or two vegetables which have become very costly and increase some one or two vegetables which are way below my standard cost. So overall, I can ensure that I am making that fifteen percent per k, fifteen rupees per kg margin from the blend of things I sell in the shop. So the whole thing with the digitalization, you can manage well. So with that, he was clearly able to see that three point nine lakhs of fixed cost to be met with fifteen kgs required at twenty six thousand kg per month of sales. And from that day onwards, he found that the new stores were breaking even in nearly nine months, much less than a one-year period which it used to take earlier and ahead. So he was able to bring more new shops quickly into profitable mode in a short period of time. This digitalization enabled him to in a short period of time. This digitalization enabled him to balance and ensure that he is able to manage the contributions in a manner that he is able to make the uh, ten inch meat very fast. As he grew and larger numbers came, there were also regulatory issues which kept coming up, right? Now, what came up was an FAS, uh, FSSA audit. FSSA can audit any uh, source of uh, uh, any, any entity which is dealing with foodstuffs basically, alright? That was one thing which came up. This basically arose because one customer triggered. He started complaining about organic labeling which the company was doing or the, the, the the F cube shops were claiming, right? So that is what led to the FSSA audit and they were talking about where is the certification and where is the traceability, et cetera. So this made F cube to look at what is the requirement and what they need to do. And they went in for the Indian organic certification called NPOP. NPOP, which is National Program for Organic Production. So they went and got that certification, right, to ensure that they are completely compliant and there is a QR traceability by having QR codes. In the trace which they were using for transport, et cetera, so that there is some traceability. So each batch was QR coded and that was used for traceability. Now, these are the benefits of digitalization which are significantly coming to help them. So with the QR code, you can find that particular batch came from which farmer, whether that is an approved farmer and organic production, et cetera. The whole thing and when it was picked up, when it was brought, all that will be available, traceable. To do all this, they had to bring in a full-time compliance officer for the quality of this and the sustainability focused towards that. So this was another thing which they dealt with at that point of time. In this growth phase, the second area they found issue was GST audit. Now from two thousand seventeen onwards, or rather two thousand twenty one, twenty two onwards, when after few years they started doing audit, GST department started doing audit, many firms have been waking up to mistakes they have done or misinterpretations they have done, even with all good intentions, alright? But issue is an issue. So this company started facing problem with the GST on couple of shows, right? What was that they were having as a problem? The whole thing was because there were different rates applicable. If it's a whole vegetable, it is zero rate for tax GST, there is no GST on it. But if it's a pre-cut vegetable, then you are supposed to charge five percent on it. And in case you bake it into a packet snacks, then there is a twelve percent GST on it. Of course, they were not making packaged snacks, so let's forget that for a moment. But the pre-cut vegetables was one large part of what they were doing or reasonably large part of what they were doing and that amounted to five percent charge, which was not configured at all. So after the GST audit, they addressed the past issue by dealing with the case with the GST, paying for that, et cetera. But then they had their own internal system, the billing software and how the HSN codes are mapped to it because the rates are picked up based on HSN. And this they started then reviewing periodically also to ensure that they are compact. So these are steps which they took. Then the, from the labor perspective, again, there was issue. ESIC came and did an inspection and said that hundred plus employees are not being covered and they need to be covered. And they said the way you are structuring your shifts has to be relooked. So all that was then addressed. On the sustainability part, F cube also switched to compostable bags. Now if you see many of these chains are moved to that compostable bags, right? And they also partnered with local waste management for recycling the food waste, that is the vegetable waste which were arising. So that nothing goes actually as a waste. So it is used and recycled for something else. When vegetables become a little old, you cannot sell them. So what you do, they can become decayed, et cetera, then there will be also some portions of the vegetable when you do cut vegetables and this thing you will be have to discard. All these are for F cube waste, but they are usable for something else, right? So they had a tie-up with some local waste management parties for some recycling so that it becomes compost or whatever, right, to use for that. With this, they moved on to the next phase, which is the digital growth. How they used digital, digitalization to grow and an IPO roadmap for the company. So they started with e-commerce with more than two thousand five hundred subscribers and dark stores. They also launched a private label called Farms Best. So with that, they were able to get a higher margin. Right? This higher margin was coming because they started moving from selling commodity commoditized vegetables, et cetera, to a private labeled select products. Farms Best was the product brand which they wanted to have for this and in that they were able to enhance the margins because of the selective, this thing at the perception of quality and the branding which was brought around that. They also took some sustainability initiatives in this period where warehouses were solar paneled on top to reduce diesel use. And they also had a mechanism to segregate produce into ugly produce, that is produce which are not looking good for pickup. When you go and buy from a store, if there are apples, choose apples which look nice and pick that one they. In a typical scenario, everything is put onto the uh, same car, uh, sorry, same rack in the vegetable store. Some gets picked, some of them don't get picked, it kept being left behind and after some time they become rotten and waste. To avoid that, what they did, at the inception itself, they segregated ugly produce from good produce. All this ugly produce, they sold at a discounted price directly to large consumers like hotels, et cetera. These were not looking good, but they were product wise good, quality wise it was good, but does not have that look. For example, there could have been a cut part because it fell down, right? All this as a consumer, when you walk in, you don't pick them up. But in hotel industry where they are, they are doing this mass production in the backend, they will take these because qualitatively it is the same. It does not have that look. So this is what in this business is called as ugly produce, right? I think these are mechanisms by which you can enhance your overall profitability. Yes, somebody has said still fit for consumption. Yes, absolutely fit for consumption. It's only the look, right? Certain, certain things, if it doesn't look good, you don't pick it up. It's a common trait. So instead of letting it rot and waste over a period, it is better to find an alternate use so that it gets you better realization. So what would have brought you zero return? In fact, you will have to pay to clear the waste because it was being sold at a discounted thirty percent discount. You still got seventy percent of that uh, pricing as a realization for this, which otherwise would have actually cost you money to remove as waste. So with this, the company was also with all the digitalization they were doing and the reach which they were creating. They were aiming to go fifty stores by twenty twenty six and they were looking at a pan India franchise model and an IPO by twenty twenty eight. Right? So this is the plan on which they are marching currently. They have not done the IPO yet. Obviously, it's planned in the future, but they have targeted fifty stores and they are close to it and moving forward. So the growth has really happened. Built strongly on a digital platform, supported by various other things and timely action on various issues they came up with and taking some concrete and comprehensive solution to it. And bringing up novel ideas from time to time to move forward in quick times. For example, e-commerce is something which is mandatory today. Bringing in private label increases the margins, which is significant to ensure that you are remain profitable. So all these are things which they took, steps to move forward. Right? This is the background of the company and its growth till date. Now in this background, we are going to be looking at the questions on some of these case studies. Alright? So we are going to look at some of the MCQ questions first. The first one is, yeah. Freshen farm F cube was planning to import solar powered refrigeration from Germany. So which instrument is best for hedging the euro E N R risk? The interest rate swap, the forward contract, currency option or factory arrangement? What is it that is most appropriate in this scenario? Yeah, someone has said B, forward contract. Any other options, any other suggestions from any of you? Any other suggestions? Okay, right. So let's look at the answer. B, multiple people have said B, forward contract. Interest rate swap is more for interest risks being done. Forward contract is for the foreign exchange hedging, right? Forward contract locks the exchange rate for committed payables, right? So this is the right instrument to protect. And why do they need the forward cover? Because this is a farm to fresh, farm from price or whatever, fresh from farm entity in India. So buys in India, sells in India, realizes everything in I N R. So the only foreign exposure is going to be the payment for this equipment which they are going to import and over a period they are going to pay for it, right? So obviously it is good to have a forward cover done for it because you don't have any natural hedge also available. The second question is on what audit risks increases when ERP systems auto classify GST rates? So you are an auditor, you are going to do audit. Now manually, if somebody is going to enter the GST rate, you can audit in a certain manner. But if it is automated in the ERP system, there is auto classification. If this is the H N S number, this is the automatically if it's going to be doing. Then it has to be audited in a different, right? So here, what is the audit risk which increases when it is automated as a GST rate to the items which are involved? Is it A detection risk? Is it B inherent risk? Is it C control risk or is it D sampling risk? Any thoughts on it? Okay, somebody has said D, somebody has said A. Okay, so let me then take through the answers with why and why not also. So the correct answer is control risk. The reason is yeah, someone has put control risk also the process. Correct answer is controlled risk. The reason is if there is a misconfiguration, see once it is configured correctly, everything will automatically happen, no problem. But if you make a mistake in the master, then every item in that will be wrongly charged. So any misconfiguration will increase the risk that controls fail, right? Controls to prevent misstatements will be increased significantly because of one misconfiguration. So coming to why not others, A detection risk, detection risk is about whether an audit can find out or not. Now as I said, that's why I explained first. The method in which we audit will also change. Now if it was manually returned the GST rates every time or manually entered every time, you will do a sampling and you will find whether it is being properly applied. When you are talking about automation, you will again look at the master and whether the rates have been properly You will again look at the master and whether the rates have been properly set in the master. So detection will always happen because you will go and find out. And you will also see that they have a mechanism that whenever a change is made in the ERP system or whenever a update is made in the ERP system for GST classification. There is a maker and a checker process. So detection risk is protected. Inherent risk is given in the system. Now, this is not an inherent risk. Alright, control risk we saw, sampling risk, sampling risk is that I found, I chose ten items. And I did not, for example, if it was a manual control, I chose ten and verified. I did not find any errors, but there are ten others where there are errors, right? That is the sampling risk. So here it's clearly a control risk because the whole control fails if it is not properly set. Right? So that is about the GST rate on. Next is of the GST rate which you are to apply for pre-cut vegetables. So we were discussing in this case study, so what is the rate which is applicable for pre-cut vegetables? And how it is different from the main this thing? Yes, somebody has said five percent, right? So essentially vegetables are zero rated. But the stand taken is that if it is pre-cut, then it is already processed. So it will have a rate of five percent which is applicable for such categories. So it will get into a different category altogether and five percent rate will apply. This is the. This is the essence of GST on this. The next question we can look at. They were talking about franchise model, right? In a franchise model, which GST component is critical for revenue sharing? The composite supply, input tax credit, valuation rules or exemption notifications? So when there is a revenue sharing, which GST component is critical for revenue sharing in a franchisee model? Yes, somebody has said option C. Any other thought? Okay. One more answer is coming. Option C again. And option B. Now, option C is the right answer, valuation rules. Because the rule thirty one and thirty one A govern about the valuation on non-monetary consideration in franchisee agreements. So it is very critical to ensure that these are addressed in the franchise model. So the valuation rules are important to understand how the revenue sharing and the GST is addressed there. Now, the next question is on how FQ mitigated monsoon procurement price rights? Arbitrary price hikes, halting procurement, short-term loans, pre-booking at fixed prices. What is the best mechanism to address the price risk mitigation? What is the best mechanism? On a ongoing basis, what they should be doing? Okay, I have some responses coming, so let's look at it. Option C and option D. Yes, then more option D. Yes, the most appropriate one is option D. Of course, F3 did take some short-term loans for a short-term period to immediately address the problem. They went in for a overdraft facility of fifty lakhs to address the immediate problem. But the mitigation step for price issue. That short-term loan is for a funding problem, right? It is for the ability to manage cash flows. Whereas for the price risk mitigation, it is the pre-booking at fixed price. That is the permanent solution. The fifty lakhs is also a mitigation step taken but not for price risk. It is for cash management or financial management. So this is the difference we need to keep an idea, right? So sometimes the questions will be like this to uh test you from what is there in the case study. Yes, the case study talks about a fifty lakhs loan being taken, overdraft being taken, right? Which is a short-term loan. But that is for managing the financial risk, financial position, right? Rather than the price risk. So price risk is for by pre-booking at fixed prices. This is the mechanism by which they agreed to, I mean they addressed the price risk going forward. With that, we have finished the MCQ questions. Now we are going to be looking at some of the descriptive questions. Right? Now, the first one again is about the hedging tools which are available. FQ plans to import solar powered refrigeration systems from Germany. Evaluate the hedging tools available for managing the euro INR exposure and recommend the best strategy. So some thoughts on it? Any thoughts? Please put it. Let's take a minute. Let's get some answers. Good, somebody has said forward contracts, right? But I am also asking what are all the various tools available, right? What are all the various options available and which is better? Any other thoughts? Okay, I will go into the answers. Yes, forward cover is one of the key things, a tool available for hedging. And highly recommended because it's cost effective. And especially in cases like this where we know what is the amount to be paid and when it is to be paid. So the dates and the amounts are known, it's the best to take forward cover. Because you have today a lot of the rate and price, that's it. And on that date you will get exactly the amount, you have to deal with it. In the forward cover, you have to deal with it on that day. That is the most important thing, right? So what does it bring? Like I told you, the forward cover gives you stability. You today know what exactly is going to be your exposure in INR, which is what you deal with normally. So it gives you a lot of stability, right? It does not necessarily give you profit. It is stability which is the key thing there. Now, the second option which is available is options. Instead of a forward cover, I can take options. In option, what is the difference? In an option, the difference is I can buy, I can not buy, I can let it lapse. Alright? But options come with a premium. So it may or may not be very effective. And in this case, you know that you need so much of dollars on that date, right? So in the case of option, you can take a option. And if the prices are favorable, you may decide not to use that option, but then it can come with a hefty premium. So you may ultimately not benefit too much from it and that's your not big level trade on that. So options may not be the most suited for a company doing a one-time transaction of this thing. Currency swaps are also more suited for long-term exposures or debt servicing. Because these are some things which can happen over a long period. That is, I contract in euro and then I do a euro to INR swap transaction over the periods every time. So every time I will pay in INR and they will settle it in euro to make it work, right? It requires long-term transactions. So this is not the most specific, ideal and simple in this case. Because of all this is the forward cover. The second descriptive question is on a scenario where fresh from farm introduced standard costing for vegetables but found significant variance during monsoons. Example, tomato cost of thirty two per kg versus standard of twenty five per kg, right? So how did fresh from farm use variance analysis to improve cost control? Discuss the types of variance observed and corrective action stated. What do you think would be the various things which can come? Any suggestions on this? Always purchased with premium. Someone has said always purchased with premium. This we are talking about how the company ensured it remained profitable. By engaging into a standard cost model and analyzing variance, right? So this is also there in the full case study. So let me take you through this. So essentially the first one is what is the material price variance? Which is that thirty two versus twenty five, right? So is that thirty two versus twenty five is the adverse material price variance? Because we are paying more unfavorable variance, we are paying more for the same quantity, right? There is also another concept called material usage variance, right? Or quantity variance here, right? Which comes because of the higher wastage. In this scenario, it will be higher wastage, right? For example, if the wastage standard was five percent and the actual was eight percent. There is an unfavorable variance of three percent which you compute into cost, right? At the standard cost. So these are the two types of variance which are monitored. Material price variance and material usage variance, which are the two types of variances which are monitored to control costs. And to take action to control costs. So what are the actions taken to control cost? The first one is to get into pre-booking of procurement trades with the farmers. To mitigate seasonal price hikes. This is what we saw earlier also. That what is the price mitigation step they took? Pre-booked contracts. So you know you have a stable price, right? The second, to avoid wastage etcetera, the company introduced pre-cut spinach packs. This led to extended shelf life because you pre-cut, you put them in cooler shelves or cold stores depending on the case, mostly on cooler shelves, right? Which extends the shelf life and they also trained staff to act on FIFO basis to ensure spoilage is reduced. By these mechanisms, you can avoid wastage, reduce wastage. So the material usage variance is addressed by, in this particular case, by introducing pre-cut packs. And training staff for FIFO utilization. And the price variance is addressed by going in for pre-booked procurement rates. And with all this, there is also a requirement that the standard costs themselves are revised periodically. The standard cost cannot remain standard forever. Periodically you need to revise them, right? So with this, they were able to plunge the cages and achieve the returns they were looking at. Why standard cost revision periodically is required? Periodically, if you don't do the standard cost, your whole analysis is based on the standard cost plus certain margin being made on that, which we were talking about fifteen, fifteen rupees margin per kilo or whatever, right? If you are looking at that and if your standard cost itself is wrong, then you are going to be varying from that always. Then your margins are eaten up. Your selling price will not be appropriate. So it is necessary to keep modifying the standard cost so that your pricing of the end product is also appropriately adjusted periodically. To give that margin. Alright? Now we move on to the third descriptive question. FQ received a customer complaint alleging false organic claims, right? So he said you are just claiming it is organic, but it is really not. This complaint led to a FSSA audit, right? Which we saw about simultaneously in that same period. The GST department flagged mismatches in input tax credit claims due to incorrect classification of cut worst old vegetables. So these were issues which were coming up. What compliance failures occurred and how did fresh from farm resolve them? So what were the compliance failures which led to this problem and how did they deal with it? And also discuss the role of technology in ensuring future compliance. See, one of the things which is playing a big role today in nearly everything is technology. It is having significant impact in many, many aspects of what happens. So in this also, how technology could have a significant impact? in ensuring better compliance going forward? So the key things are compliance failures, right? How compliance failures occur? How did these get resolved? And what technology aspects can apply to move forward? Use of QR codes to track the produce, fantastic. Cut vegetables sold and issued separate invoice as well as for holding vegetables, right? So, very valid point. Let's look at any further answers coming. Okay, so let, yeah, I think there is something more which is there. Certification compliance not taken earlier. Proper classification of tax rate in ERP. Yes, good points. All of them good points coming from the case study. Good, very good. Right? So now we will look at the answers. Of course, some additional things you have also pointed out, right? So we'll discuss all that. The compliance failures basically came about because of selling uncertified organic produce. We had not taken certification. That was the key thing. We were buying from organic source, but we were not getting certified. So this was addressed by obtaining the NPOP certification and also implementing QR code traceability for batch data. So it can be tracked where it came from and how it is being sold. Very important steps which were taken. So this was the compliance failure with regard to FSSA requirement, right? And how it was addressed. The second part is about the GST issue. On the GST, it was a misclassification in the ERP which led to the issue, right? This was rectified through GST reconciliation audit. Payment of interest and penalties for the past period, so close it. And deployment of a GST compliant billing software that auto-mapped HSN codes. So all the HSN codes have standard rates as per the GST. So if you have a GST compliant billing software which has already built this into it. You don't have to worry as long as you pick the HSN code and put it, it comes, no problem. And your HSN codes are going to be very limited, which straight away fits for your vegetables. That's it. So this is what they did. So technology, what can be used? Blockchain can be used for store farm to store traceability, complete traceability data. Which can be in QR code also, right? Like what we were discussing. In this case, they had used QR code. It provides for complete transparency and readiness. So this is what technology can play a significant role in ensuring compliance going forward. Two areas. In the case of FSSA and related aspects, some things like blockchain or maybe QR code could be the technology which is leading right there. And in things like GST, using pre-built, pre-mapped HSN codes. So you can't make a mistake, it's already set for you. You don't have to make a mistake there, right? So with these questions and answers, we are coming to an end of the session. However, like last day, feel free to ask any questions you have. We have some more time, we can discuss free-flowing questions on any of these topics. And then we can take it forward. Any questions you can put on the chat box or you can just unmute yourself and ask. Anyone having any questions? Good, I think specifically chat says no further questions, it's been clear, right? Thank you. So if we don't have any other questions, we can probably then close it, Ajitji. Any thoughts? Any, anything from your end? Ajitji, any suggestions? Any thoughts? One second, let me check if there is any queries in the other channel. Uh, is there any issue? Hello, Ajitji, we were just waiting to see if you had anything to share. I think we are done and questions are done.
Okay, so we can might observe if you are done.
Yeah, yeah, then I thought if you had any updates to give, otherwise we can close for the day. Thank you.
Okay, sir.
Thank you, ji.
Okay, sir. Ashok ji.
Thank you so much, sir.
Yes.
Thanks all, thanks a lot. Good night and have a great weekend.